Good afternoon, I'd like to thank everyone for coming at this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Timothy Robertson from Central Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, how are you, sir?
I'm doing fine. Thank you for asking me to come, and I must offer my apologies. Last time I was supposed to be here, I wasn't.[29.02][29.02](laughter) I tried several people to put that blame, it kept coming back my way, so I have to take all that myself. Nobody in the office wanted it.
That's why we keep a bishop on staff.[40.79][40.79](laughter)
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and we ask your blessings on this council meeting and the citizens of Portsmouth. We ask God that you would bless the citizens as they come and articulate their positions and their concerns. I pray they'll have clarity of mind and articulate well. I pray for the council members as they sit, as they listen, helping Lord Jesus to take every consideration at hand. I pray that they will find consensus, they will find agreement. I pray, Lord, that when there can't find total unity, Lord, I pray that rightness will prevail. I pray that with solemnness, that we might not be able to all have our way, that we can agree to disagree and keep pushing forward. We ask your blessings on this meeting here tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, Pastor, you can't get off that easy. Before you leave, you know, you've got one of the most dynamic youth programs in our city at your church. Could you want to give us an update? I know we're going into the summer month, and we look forward to some great things.
Yes. We have, every summer, we have our Vacation Bible School, and that's in July, and we'll have about seventy-five to a hundred adults working that. Probably have about three hundred kids out there. Two weeks from now, our teens will load up, fly out to Navajo Reservation and do a missions trip. They have that planned. We also have our summer day camp planned. We also have junior camp planned for the, I think we've got about twenty kids going, we've got about thirty high school kids going to camp. And so we've got a busy, busy summer, and I'm very thankful to be a part of a church that reaches out in the community.
That's right.
Thank you.
And I just want, for the record, I've let everyone know during the walk with the mayors that the largest group so far has been Central Baptist. I'm walking next week with Grove, and they're telling me they're gonna topple you. I think we had about a hundred and, maybe a hundred and twenty people when we walked through the Hodges Ferry.
About five hundred pastoral accounts.[202.15][202.15](laughter)
Thank you again. Yeah. Okay, members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council present.
Very good. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of May 27, 2014, and a regular meeting of May 27, 2014. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Voted up.
Second. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Okay.
The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, council takes a special privilege, and the mayor will be joined at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk by Mr. Willett Moody Senior, and his family will join him. And they will, after the mayor speaks, they will be joined by the members of City Council.
Please come forward.
It is indeed an honor and a pleasure to have you here, sir. We've been trying to do this now for a month. You're a hard man to get a hold of.
Busy guy.
I am a busy guy, but you're more (laugh) about, let's see, it's been almost a month now. Mr. Moody, the great senator, was inducted into the Trial Lawyer Hall of Fame. That is a huge, I'm about giving it up. Let's hear it.[307.33][307.33](applause) And I was so touched by this, and I saw the ad in the paper, and I actually went to the First Citizens Meeting, and someone's mentioned it, and somewhere else it was mentioned, and it was killing me, we couldn't get you in here, because this is indeed an opportunity for us as a Portsmouth family to be able to allow everyone here in our viewing audience, as well as here in attendance, to understand and know about the accomplishment of people like yourself. So I really appreciate you coming and allowing us for a brief moment to brag on you and thank you for not only your body of work in your legal profession, but what you've done throughout this city and your public service and your civic engagement piece, as well as the railroad museum that has come to fruition, and you leading that charge and bringing together a talented group of folks. I've been honored to represent or sit in as mayor and see the work that Mayor Holly did with you and that museum board to get it to where it was, and I've been thoroughly impressed. And so, we didn't want to, as a council, miss this opportunity to not only recognize you here, but also make sure that the whole entire Portsmouth family knew that. And this announcement came out, the Moody Law Firm, it says, "Honored to announce that our firm's founder, president, and former State Senator of Virginia, Willett J. Moody Senior, has been recognized for his lifetime commitment, achievements, and service to the public for his selection for induction into the Trial Lawyer 2014 Hall of Fame." This prestigious honor places him in the company of such legal legends as John Adams, Clarence Darrow, Thurgood Marshall, Melvin, is that Billy?
Yeah.
And Johnny Cochrane Junior. The Trial Lawyer Hall, your friend?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. The Trial Lawyer Hall of Fame recognizes selected civil plaintiff and criminal defense trial lawyers who have left an indelible mark on the legal profession, as well as their community. Throughout a lifetime of service, honorees are selected by members of the National Trial Lawyers Executive Committee, and they have determined Willett J. Moody Senior, his illustrious career and his achievements most worthy of being honored by his peers as an inductee at the April 2014 ceremony. Sir, thank you very much, congratulations. It is an honor.[488.43][488.43](applause) Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we're gonna let you say a few words, we want to make sure we gave you a standing ovation.[499.12][499.12](applause) Yes, sir. Yes, sir, please, a few words, and we want to come around and personally shake your hand, so say a few words, and then if you would, we want to individually thank you as well. Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, I'm not gonna ask anybody for the law on my taxes, or, you come here to ask to get those streetlights fixed, or potholes, or anything along that line, so if you'll let me talk just a little while, I'll stick to the subject and to that being lawyers, and you rather talk about the other things you say?[536.16][536.16](laughter) Well, anyway, I'm really not gonna talk about lawyers, I'm gonna just talk about what you've just spoken about, and that is that I am pleased and proud.
Sure. I'm sorry. Just pay for TV, sir.
Okay, yes. What if I get on behind the?
No, 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 you're friends. We're gonna bring the family, yes, sir.
All right, good.
All right. You wanna bring, let's bring the family up to two. I'll put a round of applause as the family comes.
Come on up.[562.04][562.04](applause) That's my son Will, that's my wife Betty, and where's Paul, my son Paul, and the wives? This is, has gotten to rest them over here.
Come on in here.
All right?
We're gonna get a photo too, brother. We're gonna get a photo, we're gonna send it to talk.
All right, sure.
Yes, sir.
Let me explain to these folks that are in my family, they know how it is, that you guys are really busy people, and I know that. You work day and night, and you work hard, and we all appreciate that, because our city is one of the best-run cities I know of, and I've been around to a few, and I can say to you that out of all the places I've been, and have the Member of the House and the Senate in Virginia, I've been to different gatherings such as this, in which you had the city council there, and I know, we don't, I haven't seen a city council anywhere that has done a better job than our people here have. I mean, they're a hundred percent for the public, and they're a hundred percent for the people and for this city, so I'm proud of them, and let's give them a hand.[633.04][633.04](applause) So with that being said, I think the mayor has pretty well covered it as far as what took place and was in Nevada, Las Vegas. Wow, man, I was reporting to the guys out there.[655.16][655.16](laughter)
Yeah, leave your word, you're fucking on a thing.
Anyway, have a ball. And Louis, and if it hadn't been for our good friend here, you wouldn't be, I wouldn't have gotten out there to start with. Elizabeth took care of all that.
All the travel.
Got us on a nice plane and had a safe landing, and so it was a very nice trip, and I knew what it, but anyway, it's really not so much to say, this is a group of lawyers that really believe in America, they believe in freedom, they believe in people's rights, and they believe in doing things the way they should be done, and I'm so happy. Will was very helpful, my son was very helpful in connection, he knew some of them, I knew some of them, but not that well. Many, there are none in Virginia except me, I'm the only one in Virginia, and I was, of course, just appointed a month ago. And so, it's a group that meets, they're going to have a new headquarters for the nation, it's gonna be, I believe it's gonna be in Baltimore, Philadelphia, and they're gonna be opening up there in the fall, and I am going to, one of the first things I'm gonna do is try to get them to come to Portsmouth.[731.13][731.13](applause) Bring them to Portsmouth. And I'm gonna bring, and I'm talking about all of them, you know, from all over the country. Get them into Portsmouth, tell them to call Elizabeth, get a flight, and come on in here, and the mayor will take care of it. Because we'll put them up at hotel up here and take good care of them, and that's what we want to do. So it's not gonna be just, it's not for me, it's for the, as far as I'm concerned, it's for the city of Portsmouth and the state of Virginia. And I think they're good lawyers, and you've mentioned some of them that I know personally, and some of them are passed on, unfortunately, but this is a good thing, and I believe in them, and I think they do a wonderful job, and I'm glad to be a part of them, and I appreciate your taking the time out of your very busy schedule to recognize this.[787.13][787.13](applause)
And if you will, we want you to stand right here, and we're gonna line up and come by and shake your hand, and thank you for your body of work, sir. All right, and starting with the mayor. All right, thank you, congratulations. All right.
Again, thank you, sir.[808.13][808.13](applause)
All right, Madam Clerk, and before we do, I think we, the message out of that is we need to travel, we need to contact Elizabeth, and she'll get us to where we need to go, right? I think he plugged you twice.
Yeah.
So, well done, sir. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Mayor, can we be accused?
Absolutely, sir, you most certainly can. Thank you for coming, and we'll pause as you leave. Thank you, absolutely.[900.23][900.23](laughter) All right. One of us.
Public hearing 14-216, public hearing on use permit code amendment, street name change and street closure applications. Item A, UP 1407, Midtown Marketplace, Nathan La Laye with MSA PC, on behalf of Wendy's Restaurant, requests a use permit to construct a restaurant with a drive-through facility on approximately one acres at 1409 Frederick Boulevard. The property is owned by the City of Portsmouth Economic Development Authority, is zoned general mixed-use GMU. The Comprehensive Plan's generalized future land use map designates this property for commercial use and is located in the Midtown Regional Activity Center. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, good evening. This is an application essentially by Wendy's Restaurant for a use permit.
Come on. You gotta hold it the right way.
I was saying. Apologize for the interruption. Go ahead. This is a request for a use permit for a drive-through window, essentially that's required under the zoning ordinance for a new Wendy's out in front of the Kroger Marketplace in the Midtown Marketplace Shopping Center. Essentially, they're proposing to relocate from their current location on the corner of Barton Airline. They feel that they are confined in that space and will be building a larger building with more parking facilities, and so they've decided to relocate onto this new site. As you can see from the zoning map, the area surrounding it is either GMU, you have the Walmart across the street, and of course, the West Haven neighborhood directly west of this property. And you've seen this property before, you're gonna see it again in the next item on your agenda as well, so. The actual site that this permit is being requested for is shown in the yellow box. Again, you can see the Walmart essentially across the street from this site, as well as the West Haven neighborhood and the surrounding area with Turnpike Road and so on. This is a concept plan that was, and it may be familiar, this is the entire Midtown Marketplace Shopping Center that was approved previously, and the site that we're discussing tonight is outlined in red, so it is just south of the main entrance into the facility off of Frederick Boulevard. And this is a more detailed site, and I believe you have a copy of this site plan in your packets to look at a little more closely. The restaurant will be located in the northern portion of the site. Access to this lot is only from the interior network of roads, so there are no new curb cuts that are proposed. And you also, if you, you also have a copy of some of the renderings that were submitted with this application. The top rendering is what you would essentially see from Frederick Boulevard, and then on the bottom left is their drive-through facility that you'd see at the north entrance, or at the entrance into the shopping center, and the lower right is the entrance that you would see from the parking lot to the south. Couple of photos of the site before anything occurred is on the top, the smaller photo, and then more recently, not as recent as showing the building coming out of the ground for Kroger, but generally the site of the Midtown Marketplace Plaza and the Kroger Marketplace that's being built on the site. And then these are some of the surrounding photos across the street, you have the West Haven Park neighborhood, and then on the lower photo to the left, you have traffic on Frederick Boulevard looking towards the new Chick-fil-A, and then on the right is, lower right is the Walmart facility across the street. This went to the Planning Commission at their May 6 meeting, they held a public hearing and recommended approval with the conditions that are in your packet. The vote was a seven to zero vote, and that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them at this time.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Any thought yet what we'll do with the old location?
They have not indicated what they will do with the old location, other than to put it on the market and see what happens.
All right. Another couple.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 1407, and at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 1407. Members of council, this public hearing is closed.
May I focus a little second?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, seven zero. Item B, UP 1409, Midtown Marketplace, Michael Culpepper, on behalf of CRES EG Development Group, requests a use permit to allow two restaurants with two drive-through facilities at each end of the strip commercial building containing 9,000 square feet located at 1409 Frederick Boulevard. The property is owned by the City of Portsmouth Economic Development Authority, is zoned general mixed-use. The Comprehensive Plan's generalized future land use map designates this property for commercial use, and it is located in the Midtown Regional Activity Center. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have Mr. Culpepper available if you have questions.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I didn't say this before, my name is John Hartley, I'm Planning Administrator with the City Planning Department. This is the second item for the Midtown Marketplace property. What is, and this is the corner property at the intersection of Turnpike Road and Frederick Boulevard. If you can, and the area is kind of whited out on this map, this is a proposal by what CRES EG, which really is developing the balance of the property that Kroger is not developing. And what they're proposing is to develop the corner piece of the property at the intersection. One of the, we've gone through a number of issues with the shopping center, and then with this site in particular, and in terms of gathering spaces and bus shelters and those kinds of things, and they're all being accommodated either with this development or the Kroger Shopping Center. Again, outlined in red is the property that's the subject of this application. This is a photo looking at the site, you're looking across Turnpike and across Frederick towards the West Haven Park neighborhood, and then the upper photo is the new CVS building, they're kind of dark unfortunately, but it's the new CVS building, and you have the, excuse me, stuttered here for a second, you have the Seaboard Square project in the lower-left photo, and then the Walmart property in the lower-right photo. Essentially, what is proposed are two drive-through facilities, one on each end of the building that's highlighted in yellow. The building that is in blue is intended as a freestanding restaurant of about 4,500 square feet and is not really a part of this application. What they are proposing is a drive-through facility on each end of that yellow building. One of them is to be a Dunkin' Donuts, as I understand it, the other is not been disclosed at this point in time. They've had some interest in it from a number of parties, but haven't disclosed who that might be in the end. This particular proposal ran into a number of issues with our zoning ordinance, and so the CRES EG applied to the Board of Zoning Appeals for three variances. And those variances included allowing two bays of parking facing Frederick Boulevard. There are glazing or window requirements when they face the road, and instead, they've designed a fairly attractive rear of the building that would face Turnpike. And the third variance was that the main facade is supposed to face the street, and if you wouldn't mind clicking, ultimately, the property will be subdivided as shown by the yellow line, and so technically, the building facing the street, it doesn't in this case, it faces the inner portion of the shopping center. All of those variances were approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals to make this site essentially developable. If you look at the angle of the property, as well as some constraints, contractual constraints with Kroger, there really weren't a lot of other options in developing this property. The other thing I'll point out is, the original concept plan showed basically this configuration when the Kroger Marketplace was approved, so we've worked very hard with the developer to try to figure out the path through the existing zoning provisions and come out with this.
So, John, if I'm on Turnpike, am I looking to the right, I'm looking at the back of that building?
When you're on Turnpike, the rear of that building will be exposed to the street, but they have designed a series of arches that are distinguished, so it's not gonna be your typical
Bear wall.
Bare wall, concrete block wall with dumpsters sitting out there. The other thing is, the drive-through windows are dependent upon that drive aisle around the back of the building. It'll also be heavily landscaped, and can you back it up one photo? You'll notice that there's birmingham all along the, all between the back of the building and the street, and that goes on around the entire property, really, to Frederick Boulevard, so it'll be well-screened, both with the berm and the landscaping, as well as being reasonably attractive for a rear side of a building. And that, that was a condition imposed by the Board of Zoning Appeals as well, so well documented and put in writing, so everybody understands what the requirements are. With that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the requested use permit for two drive-through facilities with the conditions that are in your packet, and their vote was seven to zero, and with that, I'll try to answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay. Any question, comments? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And I would indicate Mr. Culpepper is here if you have questions.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 1409. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak on item UP 1409. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Voted up.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved seven zero.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Culpepper. And I hope this is part of those home runs that we talked about and the base hits that you and I talked about. We're getting there, correct? All right, thank you.
Item CCA 1401, Downtown D1 District, proposal to amend section 40.1-9.7, parking of Appendix A pertaining to the Downtown D1 District and 1 Part 7, Parking of Lo, Parking and Loading Standards 703, Scope of Regulations H pertaining to the Uptown D2 District Form Based Code to modify the parking requirements for properties in the T4, T5, and T6 sub-districts of the Downtown D1 District. This amendment will apply to the same parking standards to all properties north of Interstate 264 in the Downtown D1 District. Vision principle: Efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call and have no registered speakers. Wait, we got, we have a presentation.
This is essentially a, a fix in the ordinance. We, we discovered in working with some property owners that there was a disproportionate parking requirement between our, essentially our downtown or D1 district and the uptown D2 district. Essentially, we're talking about the area within the circle, and I'm going to go, try to go through these fairly quickly, but the, the, the T5 district really runs along High Street of, and along Effingham. And east of Effingham, in the downtown district, there's no parking requirement. When you get into the D2 district, which is just, just a couple of blocks west of Effingham, there's no parking required if the, if the business is less than 8,000 square feet. And so what you end up with is this, and if you hit the last, you end up with this disparity that's in the start area, and a, a, a large portion of, of it is T5, and there's a small portion of T4 as well. And so what we're, what we're proposing is, is an amendment to the D1 and D2 districts that would essentially extend the no parking requirement to include all of, of the D1 district that's in the, or the D1 districts that's in the downtown district. So there'd be no parking requirement essentially all along High Street out to the, I'll say, the left edge of the, the solid line. And it's, it's really to eliminate that disparity that exists between Effingham and Patton Street. There are a number of buildings there that, that have no parking facilities, don't have land for parking facilities, and it's really creating some, a greater degree of equity along, along that entire High Street section. This is one of a number of amendments that you'll be seeing in the next couple of months. We met with the Planning Commission at their last meeting and went through, I want to say, 28 or 29 different items that we'll be addressing over the next couple of months, things that we know we need to fix and, and need to move forward to do that, so. With that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CA 1401. And at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item CA 1401. Members of city council, this public hearing is closed.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. Item DSNC 1401, Westbury, ordinance granting the request of Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a street name change in the Westbury Development. The request is to change Shawn Sykes Avenue to Shawn Sykes Avenue to accurately reflect the historical spelling of the name. This change would apply to those properties fronting on Shawn Sykes Avenue from Columbia Street to Godwin Street. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call and have no registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this is a fairly simple, straightforward request. When the surveying company received the information, they, they received erroneous spelling of the, of the name Shawn, and so this is to correct that before properties are actually conveyed from PRHA to separate individuals. And if you wouldn't mind hitting the, the next slide. Basically, we're just changing how Shawn is spelled, and then the next slide, please. This street was, was named after Shawn D. Sykes, who was a resident of Portsmouth, who died in, in Iraq back in May 7th of 2007, and this is just information about how he died, and I believe you have this information in your packet. I'd say it's a good thing to, to memorialize those who, who serve overseas.
And get their name right.
And get their, but it's important to get their name right as well, so that's what this does. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item SNC 1401. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but didn't have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item SNC 1401. Members of city council, this public hearing is closed.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. Item ES 1402, Downtown, ordinance granting the request of George Wilson, city attorney, for the closure of a 10-foot wide alley located on the south side of the 1,800 block of King Street, just east of Yorktown Avenue. This alley is 105 feet long and adjoins the west side of the parcel addressed as 1,815 King Street. This request is being made to consolidate lots for the new Behavioral Healthcare Services Building located on the northeast corner of Yorktown Avenue and County Street. Vision principle: Efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this is an application, obviously, by your city attorney. It is essentially a housekeeping item associated with the new Behavioral Health Services Building. This alley runs to, runs south towards the building, but essentially is in the parking lot that will serve the Behavioral Health Services Building. It is outlined on the, on the map to your left. On your right is a picture of the Behavioral Health Services Building. And the, the 10-foot alley essentially is where this arrow is going towards the building is, is indicated. It's approximately 100 feet long, and this is a survey of that, that piece of property. And our Planning Commission recommended approval seven zero, and if there are any questions, I'll attempt to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Questions? All right, Madam Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item S 1402. And at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item S 1402. Members of city council, this public hearing is closed. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. City Manager's Report 14-217, adoption of a motion to accept the FY 2012-13 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by Cherry Beckett, the city's auditor. Vision principle: Efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call. Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm, I'm pleased to introduce Krista Edoff, who is our new partner with Cherry Beckett. She is now the, the head of the Government Services Industry Practice at Hampton Roads' Office of Cherry Beckett. She's taking over as partner on the city and the school audit, and you may remember Bob Bealot, who was our, who had previously been our audit partner, has retired as of the end of April of this year. So we're happy to have Krista on board, and she's here to present the fiscal year 2012-13 audit results to you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, and all others present, I am pleased to report the June 30, 2013 audit results. You have been provided a copy of the city's CAFER, as well as a letter that we consider matters of required communication, and I will go through those two documents for you tonight. When we conduct our audit, the end result is three audit opinions within that CAFER document. Now, those opinions are based on, one, the financial statements themselves. The second one is on your compliance with laws and regulations of the state of Virginia, and the third one is based on laws and regulations over any federal grants that you might receive. So those are the three audit opinions that we do provide. I am pleased to report that this year, again, you do have unmodified opinions on all three of those reports. That is essentially the best result you could hope for in an audit. Now, I'll kind of go through and tell you a little about, about each of those three reports. The report on the financial statements, when we conduct our audit, we must report in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Those standards are set forth as a guide for us to conduct our audit, and we also are audited to make sure that we are complying with those standards when we conduct your audit. Now, when we conduct your audit, we do assess your internal control environment, but not to report on internal controls. So for those of you who might be familiar with the public sector, the SEC, the SOX 404 reporting, governments are not required at this time to have any such reporting on internal controls. So we do not issue an opinion related on your internal controls. However, if any matters were to come to our attention where we felt internal controls were maybe lacking, we would be required to report that to you within the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs that's included in the back of your CAFER. We did not have any major matters of those reporting matters this year. Now, on our report of the financial statements, we essentially conclude that your audit, your financial statements are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This essentially means you could take your CAFER and compare it to other CAFERs across the United States and be comparing apples to apples, because you're reporting under the same accounting principles. In addition, during our audit, we've tested material balances and transactions and concluded there's no material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. So that essentially is what our audit of the financial statements reports to you. Now, the other two reports are on compliance and internal controls and other matters in accordance with government auditing standards over your state laws and regulations and over your compliance with federal grants. I had already previously mentioned to you that, again, we had unmodified opinions on those. Now, however, there may be matters of what's called non-material non-compliance, where it doesn't impact the level of reporting on your financial statements, but it is something that we may bring to your attention, where you've had maybe little minor matters where you were not in compliance with a certain aspect of a grant. And where those are reported, they're also included in the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs listed after those reports in the back of the CAFER. That concludes the three audit opinions that we provide. We do also require what's called a matter of required consultation. That essentially says that we are independent with regards to the city, and it means we have no family relationships or any reason to cause us bias in giving you your audit opinion. I am required to report any new accounting principles that went into play this year. The city did adopt GASB 61, GASB 62, 63, and 65. You will note in our financial statement opinion that we do put that as a separate paragraph, just to draw to your attention that there are some changes if you try to compare that report to last year. Most significantly is a change in wording, whereas if you look last year, it's called a statement of net assets. This year, it's now referred to as a statement of net position. So that's one of the main changes. The other big change is some data within your CAFER. You were used to seeing previously assets, liabilities, and net assets. Now, the standards have added two new mezzanine levels called deferred outflows and deferred inflows. So if you look at your financial statements now, you will see assets, deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows, and then your net position. So they've just broken out and redefined some accounts into those two new categories called deferred inflows and outflows. So I just want to bring that to your attention. If you do try to compare your CAFER this year to last year, you will see those changes.
And the whole purpose of that was?
Just they, when they looked back at the definition of certain assets and liabilities that were being classified, they really didn't meet the definition that was built into the standards. So they came up with these two new categories to show these items that are considered deferrals. I guess, within your CAFER, just want to point out that not every number in there is a hard and fast number. Some items built into there are estimates. Those are outlined in the notes to the financial statements. Just an example of that would be your risk management, self-insurance type activities, any pension or OPEB obligations that you would be subject to in the future. Those are based on actuarial calculations, so they are an estimate. They're not a hard and fast number. It's just our responsibility to report that those numbers could be subject to change in the future, but they really are based on that actuarial valuation. So again, we're required to report that to you. Within the CAFER this year, there was one prior period adjustment. You will note that the implementation of GASB 65, where it did change some classifications and new accounts, did also impact that you have a prior period adjustment, and that's in detail included within the notes to your financial statements. So if you looked back and compared this year's CAFER to last year and tried to see number for number, you wouldn't be able to see that because of this adjustment. And again, the details of that number are outlined in the notes to the financial statements. Lastly, we'd really like to thank Mrs. Swindell and her staff for their assistance during the audit, and with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Okay. All right. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I recommend that you consider a motion to officially receive and file this report.
Okay. Is there a move? All right. Madam Clerk? It's been moved in second, moved by Ms. Simmons and second by Mr. Meeks.
Okay, thanks. You're voting electronically.
All right.
This item has been adopted seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, and welcome aboard, by the way. Okay, Madam Clerk?
14-218, adoption of an ordinance authorizing a transfer in the amount of $96,200 from the FY 2013-14 Social Services Fund to the FY 2013-14 Capital Improvement Fund to provide funds to purchase and install replacement network switches and related equipment in the social services building. Vision principles: Neighborhood and sense of community, quality of life and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call and have no registered speakers.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-219, Adoption of an Ordinance to Appropriate $71,083 in the FY 2014-15 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for Case Management Services to Administer the Shelter Plus Care Grant Program. Vision, Principles, Neighborhoods, and Sense of Community, Quality of Life, Lifelong Learning Community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-220, Adoption of Two Resolutions Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Dees of Easement in Favor of the Hampton Road Sanitation District. Vision, Principles, Efficient Response of Government, and Change and New Directions. Item A, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an easement to the Hampton Road Sanitation District on property owned by the City of Portsmouth on Holland Road in the City of Suffolk, Virginia, for the purpose of installing, relocating, and upgrading and maintaining sanitary sewer facilities. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. Item B, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an easement to the Hampton Road Sanitation District on property owned by the City of Portsmouth in the 1200th Block of South Street for the purpose of installing, relocating, upgrading, and/or maintaining sanitary sewer facilities. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-221, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing the Department of Public Utilities to Accede by 25% or More the Contract for Quadrant One of the Downtown Master Utility Plan Water and Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Vision, Principles, and Robust Economy for Working Men and Women in Neighborhoods and Sense of Community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't here for the dialogue with the staff on this. With the dollar amount, I would ask the manager if it was possible to put it off for two weeks to come back for a vote at our next session.
We can do that, and we'll do it two ways. We'll put it on the work session so we can do the brief, and we'll put it on the regular session.
All right.
Concurrence?
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Well done.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Meeks to defer for two weeks.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Moody. Wait. She's...
Let her reset the deck.
Wait a minute. Stop. Don't hit it.
Tell them hit it. Don't hit it. Don't hit it. Okay.
Now, you can vote electronically.
All right.
This item is being deferred to June 24 by a vote of 6-1. Okay. 14-222, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing a Memorandum of Agreement with the African American Historical Society for the Operation of the Portsmouth Colored Community Library Museum on Elm Avenue. Vision, Principles, Neighborhoods, and Sense of Community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. New Business, 14-223, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, the Personnel Committee would like to submit for your consideration the following reappointment and appointments to boards and commissions. Reappointment to the History Commission, Catherine Saunders. Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, appointment of Doritia Page. Economic Development Authority, appointment Andrew Bailey. Cultural Alliance Liaison, appointment Leslie Parker. Redevelopment and Housing Authority, appointment of Charlene Kofield.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-224, Items Submitted by Council Members.
Okay, thank you. Let me just say, we're in the opportunity to make a huge announcement tonight, and we want to bring up Mr. Patrick Small, our Economic Development Director, to give us an overview of this property that we're going to be purchasing. And Mr. Rowe, do you want to tee this up before we?
I do, actually. It's a dual presentation by Patrick and Nita, and so I'm going to ask Nita to come up.
Okay.
On April 22 of this year, we gave council a presentation that you had asked. You had asked me back last year, council did, on, to develop a plan to implement the city's Parks and Recreation Plan. And it was a quite comprehensive presentation, as you can tell. But there was one element that we could not make public, and we're making that public tonight. As you know, last winter, Vice Mayor Cherry heard that the Pines might be for sale. He discussed that with staff and council, and council directed that we begin negotiations for the purchase of that property. And I'm pleased to report tonight that we have completed those negotiations, and we have a deal. And Nita and Patrick will explain the deal and how this property strategically fits into the city's recreational plan. This is a bold recreational initiative.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you, John. I'm going to lead us off, as John said, and cover the real estate piece, and then Nita will take over and talk about the exciting part of the presentation, which is what the city's going to do with the property. As the manager mentioned, you know, this is a piece of property that many of us are familiar with. People have often speculated what it might be used for and whether it may ever be for sale. And we all hear rumors periodically, and it came to Vice Mayor Cherry's attention that the property may actually be pending listing for sale. So, as John said, with that tip and your blessing, we started pursuing the property. It did turn out that it in fact is for sale, was for sale. We were able to, through the past nine months, get ourselves first listed as an excluded party in the event that the property ultimately got listed. We did do an appraisal of our own, which we shared with the company, and there was one other excluded party in that contract who was also interested in possibly purchasing it, and came to find out there was actually a potential buyer out there as well. So, I'll give you a little background on the piece. In the '50s, Fred Beasley acquired it from the federal government for use by the Frederick Foundation and established Frederick Military Academy. If you Google that, you'll notice there's actually a website out there that the alumni maintain. And I'm sure if none of you up there actually attended Frederick Military Academy, you probably know quite a number of people in our community who did. So, acquiring this property is sort of a bringing it back into the public fold process. Before that, it was Carver Homes, which was a defense housing project, and it's a 30-acre parcel, which, as we all know, in a city our size, as urban as we are and as developed, is a very, very rare find. A 30-acre piece of property that's not subdivided and not intensely developed. So, there's an aerial view of the former Frederick Military Academy, a view of it in the '60s. The property was closed as a military academy in '85, converted from the Frederick Foundation to a predecessor entity of the Pines. And the Pines is that behavioral healthcare facility that's located over in the Parkview area of our city. They use this facility as an extension of that. They will still maintain their operations over in Parkview, but this property is no longer needed by them. The sales price, when the Frederick Foundation transferred it to the Pines, was $4.5 million. And although the parent company, because the healthcare industry is one that's gone through a lot of merger and acquisition over the years, has changed, the site's been in continuous use for the same purpose since 1986. As the manager mentioned, we reached out to United Health Services late in 2013, fourth quarter. As I mentioned also, the company told us they were considering selling it. We pulled the assessment. The assessment on the property was six, is $6.275 million, much of that in the buildings, as well as the land. And it's our belief the property can easily be transformed into one of the city's premier recreational sites. The property contains a gym with an indoor basketball court, outdoor tennis and basketball courts, an outdoor fitness course, and high ropes course. School building and office space. We went out and took some photos that Nita's going to share with you later today, but that school facility looks as though somebody rang the bell at the close of a school day. The students, teachers, all left. There's books, there's posters on the wall. Cherry Carpet was out there today putting in new carpet. The floors are buffed out, and it's move-in ready. Miniature golf course that's in a bit of disrepair, baseball softball field, dormitory, complete cafeteria and dining hall with walk-in freezers and chillers. It's an institutional dining hall, small outdoor pool, and a tremendous amount of open space that Nita will also talk to you about. So, in addition to the sheer size of the site, the property's strategically located at one of the major intersections here in the city. Nita's also going to talk a little bit about the surrounding neighborhoods and some of the demographics and the people that'll be able to use the facility. And although the property was not included in the Parks and Rec master plan that was made to the council, as the manager noted, this piece was a factor in the development of that presentation, and Nita will talk to you a little bit as well about that and some of the short-term things that she's proposing for that property. So, the location of the site actually presented potential economic development opportunities that you can market for private development in the event you choose not to use all of it for recreation, but we don't think that's a lightly outcome. We think you're going to want to use the whole property, so. Here's sort of an aerial of it. You can see in the top right corner, along Portsmouth Boulevard, the gym. It's got the old concrete-style bleachers inside with the wooden slat screwed down to them, so not much repair will ever be needed to those. The court itself was recently redone. It's in great shape, the lighting up in the ceiling. And anybody up there ever played basketball on that hardwood? All right. And the tennis court's recently resurfaced. Needs some treatment to the weeds and some sealing of the cracks, but as you can see from the aerial, bright and shiny. The dorms in the middle. The cafeteria dining hall that I mentioned, the property is fully fenced. There is a gated entrance. Right now, there's a guard out there 24/7 who keeps an eye on the property for the company. And then the far right corner is the old school building that I mentioned. A lot of people...
You didn't mention the football field. We actually played on the football field as well. Several of us played on that.
Hard to pick out. Is that it underneath of the gym, in front of the gym there?
Just for the record, I wrestled in the gym.
You can continue. Go ahead.
Very highly trafficked part of the city. Traffic counts right now are in excess of 17,200. City staff has completed the negotiations with the owner of the property. We don't have the contract finalized. They, we sent him a letter of intent. They agreed to our terms and conditions. I think the manager's asking you tonight both for the authorization for the funding, as well as permission for himself and the city attorney to negotiate that contract and execute it on your behalf. And not to speak for him, but this bullet does say that John recommends you adopt that ordinance. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nita.
Ms. Joseph, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I am very excited to share with you how this site will fit into the recreation plan. We toured it today. We've toured it a couple of times before, Margaret and I, and we're really excited. I'm really pleased to share this with you. If you look here, this is just a field that's waiting to be played on. It's absolutely ready now. Just cut the grass, and we're going to mark all of the fields up with football and soccer, and we're ready to go. You can see in the far distance, that's the, those are the dormitories, and then you can see the baseball diamond, and it's grassed over, but you can see the fencing there. Yes. Here's another shot by the gym, and you can see all the way across the field. It's huge. That's another shot of the gym with the field coming out, and that's the base, you can see a part of the baseball diamond off to the right, off to the left, and then the football field. That's one of three playable courts. You have outdoor basketball courts, and you have tennis courts. That is the obstacle course with the ropes. It's what the military use to, you know, prepare you for jumping in the water and out of trees and everything else. But it's great. It's in wonderful shape. It's in absolutely wonderful shape. This is the education area, the classroom area, and this is where we were able to go into today. And as Patrick mentioned, they're putting in new carpet. The furniture is there. The furniture is in great shape. You would expect to have to buy furniture and fixtures for a new facility, but we don't. We don't have to buy very much at all. We can actually walk in there. It's painted in just absolutely excellent condition. This is one of the classrooms. You can see where the carpet's down and the coat base is going in, and the walls are painted. This is the shop area. They were storing different items in the shop area. I think that they had moved from the classroom areas, but that's the, the shop equipment's there. The wood's there. Coffee pots, coffee makers, everything is there. It's just gorgeous. This building, these two buildings represent two of, I think, either four or five instructor homes that are on the site. We were not able to visit those, but they appear to be very well constructed. If you recall, when Mrs. Gill, Dr. Gill and Mrs. Thorne actually presented the recreation plan to you, they showed you all of the new sites that would be around the city in green. Those are the green sites. If you look at the blue sites, which are pretty hard to see, those are the existing sites. I'm going to ask the sergeant in arms just to click one time, please. It's not going to change. It's going to animate. And you'll see now where the Pines is located. What we have done, you saw, maybe, and I'm not sure if you actually saw this, one of the little stars disappeared right at 23704, 23701 juncture, and that was where we had planned initially to erect a new gym at Douglas Park. But the goal now is to forego that plan and invest that money into restoring the Pines. Here's the potential impact to the community. When we looked at the number of citizens in 23702, 23701 South, and 23704, you would have an immediate impact of about 38,000 citizens in the community. The programs and or opportunities that are offered were pretty much described by Patrick. You have the gymnasium. You currently have a swimming pool. We'd like to add an Olympic-sized swimming pool. You have classroom programs that we could implement, and we look at the... And we look at the athletic fields as a complex because we believe we can accommodate football, baseball, soccer, a track. We have the obstacle course, tennis and basketball, all at the same time. We don't have to share fields. We can have fields that will accommodate every sport. In addition, there's office space, and with the kitchen and the cafeteria, we believe that we can have excellent feeding programs and other senior programs in that area. Now, you also saw this at the presentation that was presented, given by Dr. Gill and Mrs. Thorne. And if you recall, when we shared this slide with you, we had our new facilities where we would, we were added, like the plus threes in black, those were the new facilities we were going to add. Well, now with the Pines, by adding the Pines to the list of available resources that we have for Parks and Recs, in zip codes 23701 and 23702, because of the location of the Pines, those zip codes also benefit by that facility. But if you look at 23704, we have additional programs that can be offered. There's a new center in 23704. We have additional ball fields, including the Brighton Field that we would continue to work to renovate. We have pools, a current pool, a tennis complex, and we are proposing a skate park there. So now you're looking at at least 70 different recreational opportunities within the city because we've added the Pines. Now, we had a five-year master plan in terms of funding, looking at a million dollars every year. And I'll ask the Sergeant-at-Arms just to click once to animate. We have, and it's very difficult to read, but I'll show you the senior center upgrades and the Churchland Primary Gym Floor. That activity, we would suggest delaying those upgrades and using those funds for the Pines for this year. We do have to do some roadwork in there just to, you know, because the grass has grown over. In addition, for future years, we would redirect the funds that would be targeted for the Douglas Park Elementary Gym Edition, and we would also considering redirecting funds for JFK. That facility has to be evaluated now because it's so close to the Pines. And so there are some additional savings that we could see by foregoing the renovation of JFK and maybe adding that money to, to the Pines. Any questions?
Well, this is certainly great news, and let me ask before we go further, what are the chances of getting that pool operational for this summer?
Well, as soon as we close on the property, right now, we're actually going to start looking at working with engineering to lay out the property even before we close. We still have to evaluate the pool to make sure that.
So we haven't done a thorough assessment, all the equipment and all the pumps and all that stuff? We don't know the conditions?
Right. We haven't done that. But we do plan to open the property up immediately for the gym and for the fields. We need a football field for the Craddock group because they've lost that field. That would be an immediate use for them.
Absolutely.
So we will be using the field, that property immediately, the fields first.
Okay, yeah, there, actually, there are several folks looking for a football field. I think the Mustangs called last week looking for somewhere to play because I think they were out there at the Craddock place. So, no, this is great news, and I'm glad to see it come into fruition and want to thank the staff and everyone else for their diligence. I know this has been rumored for several months now, and it's just great news for not only the south side of Portsmouth, but Portsmouth as a whole. Because again, this fits in perfectly into that plan and allows us to immediately do some things that we would not have been able to do. And so again, I say kudos. Mr. Moody?
No, you, uh, thank you, Mayor. I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Well, we do want to actually introduce the ordinance. Are you going to read that or you, Mr. Chair?
I'm making a motion that we add an item to the agenda.
Okay. And prior to doing that, we want Ms. Randall to speak and Dr. Edmonds. Ms. Randall?
Before, I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Randall?
First of all, I would like to commend the city for seeing what a valuable project that is over there at that site and how it would enhance the quality of life for many of our residents in the city of Portsmouth. Some of us who've been around a long time have seen a lot of things that went on that should not have gone on, which would have helped to enhance the quality of life for our youth and could be incorporated as a part of what we are offering in our schools in the physical education programs. I was concerned because I could see the handwriting on the wall of private development going up there would not benefit that city as such. But I'm very happy to hear this because I was going to make a joyful noise if it was for anything other than the enhancement of the quality of life for our young people, our senior citizens, and the recreational offerings in the city. And I had heard rumblings like, I'm sure some of the heads bobbing out there had heard just like I was. And I feel as if I speak with a true voice for the people, and I know what the residents are looking for because they've talked with me about it personally. And so I'm so happy to hear that this will be an answer to a prayer for many of our children who have been deprived of opportunities that that facility will offer to them. So I commend you.
Thank you.
For the plans that you are bringing toward us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. Dr. Edmonds?
I'd just like to ditto what Councilwoman Randall has said, but also echo the fact that I know that the Civic League, so Trupston and Douglas Park area, can help, will be pleased with that. I'm happy, glad about it. I, I knew of a church that tried to buy that property a while back, but they didn't want to sell it at that time.
No mention.
So I'm glad to see it be across the street as a good neighbor, none between us but the tracks and us. But I'm grateful because there are so many possibilities that have already been set. And if we just follow through and fix it in such a way where not only will those communities of Trupston and Douglas Park and Craddock be beneficial, but communities all over the city of Portsmouth can come. It's big enough, bodacious enough for us to do any and every type of thing that will benefit not just only young people, but seniors as well. And so it's a gated area, and so we can have a good time. I can't wait to play some ball myself out there.
I might even go swim.
Okay, very good. Now, at this time, we want to introduce the ordinance here and have it read. Mr. Moody, you want to? Okay. Yes, sir?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. What I was going to do is actually think the kids, the Civic League, that probably for the last three years, maybe longer, that have been coming to this body expressing a need for additional recreation facilities in this city. I think this shows that we did listen. Government always takes longer than what a lot of us thinks it should, but at the end of the day, we listened. We seized an opportunity, and I think it's going to benefit those who came here to speak. And it's going to add a lot of opportunities, hopefully, and I saw the woodworking shop there. I would like to see some of that retained, and we would build on some of the crafts that senior citizens and others could participate in. But I just want to thank those who spent a lot of valuable time coming and talking to this body for being the catalyst, if you may, for the action that we've going to take tonight. Thank you.
Well done, Mr. Moody. Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, we've got a motion and a second.
You have a motion and a second to add this item to the agenda, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mayor. May I move approval of the following ordinance? An ordinance to appropriate $3,075,000 in the FY 2013-14 General Fund and FY 13-2014 Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of approximately 30 acres at 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard and to authorize the city manager and the city attorney to prepare and execute the necessary documents to complete the purchase. The ordinance reasons follow. Whereas the city desires to purchase approximately 30 acres at 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard for recreational uses, and whereas the owner of the property is willing to sell the property for $3,750,000, and whereas sufficient funds to purchase the property are available in the undesigned general fund balance, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, that it hereby appropriates the sum of $3,750,000 in the FY 2013-14 General Fund. The source of the said appropriation shall be the unassigned general fund balance. That is authorizes the transfer of $3,750,000 from the FY 2013-14 General Fund to the FY 2013-14 Capital Improvement Fund and appropriate said sum in the latter fund for purchase of the property. The estimated revenues are increased in the FY 2013-14 General Fund and the FY 13-2014 Capital Improvement Fund, that the city attorney is authorized and directed to prepare and review such documents as may be necessary to affect the purchase of the property. And the city manager is authorized and directed to execute such documents under such terms as he deemed in the best interest of the city, and that this ordinance shall take effect on the date of its adoption, adopted by the Portsmouth City Council, hopefully 2010.
Second.
Third. Fourth.
Okay. All right, so I think. Madam Clerk, Mr. Meeks? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to stress the importance of getting the football fields. The inner-city youth, they've contacted me. I know also Olive Branch has been a little league for years. They have dissolved. Mustangs, several teams out there that really, really need football fields for this coming up season, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Well done. Okay, we're voting? All right, Mr. Moody, I'm sorry.
Well, Mayor, I would like to say, certainly for the public here tonight, that nobody in the audience knew that this was going to be on the agenda. So consequently, there has not been a public hearing. So I think we should allow the public an opportunity to express an opinion here tonight before we.
I couldn't agree more. All right. Madam Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, there's an item before city council of an ordinance that was not previously advertised. At this time, you have an opportunity to come forward, state your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on the proposed ordinance that is before the city council.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good evening. My name is Reggie Allen. I live 1421 Wilcox Avenue in the city of Portsmouth. I'm the former president of Civic League in the area of where the Pines is, okay? And the reason I came up is because I remember, I don't know, a couple of years back, when they destroyed the fire station at the corner Elm and Portsmouth Boulevard and the parks behind it, the city went, came and they appropriated the funds to build another fire station and some recreation down at D. Crete and Portsmouth Boulevard.
Never happened.
But, you know, they appropriated the money in open council meeting, but about three days later, they went into the back room back there and counseled all of that out. So I hope this doesn't happen to this project that they are doing now.
I can assure you it will not.
That's the same thing they told me on that project, too. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Portsmouth. I stand before you, I'm sorry, my name is Elvare Johnson, I'm the president of the Whistler Ward Civic League, and I stand here really happy tonight, thankful as well. I may not have gotten what I asked for. I might have gotten more than I asked for, and I'm pleased with that. And I'm happy to see that council did listen this time. I think the children will be happy. I'm with you, Mayor. I want everything open yesterday. I would love to be able to go and view onsite and see what they got to offer so that I can tell the people in my council, my league. I would like to brag a little bit about, we made so much noise, as Ms. Marlene can say, made a joyful noise. We kept making a joyful noise, and I kept right on getting on your nerves, I hope. And I intend to get on your nerves some more soon, I promise. And even though y'all just decided to do all of this for a while, it's not like it's the first time you heard about the idea of using the Pines. So it's not new to me that you finally listened, because that's the way you do. You listen when you want to, at the time you need to. So I'm going to say on that note, thank you again. I appreciate all that you have done. I would like to get a chance to, like I say, go onsite and visit and check it out myself, and I'm happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I can assure you and the other Civic League that we would more than likely have an open house to invite all of our Civic League and members to come over and take a look so we can work together in a collaborative effort to make sure that we, we do the right thing with this piece. So thank you for that suggestion. Yes, sir?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Clyde Toll. I live at Parkview, 1029 Blest Street. Back in the 50s, when I came here, that's where I lived also, when I came from Korea. This was a great place. That's where all the servicemen, during that time, that's where all the blacks lived at, because it was segregation here. It was called Gospel Road, Carver's Home. But it was all military. The biggest thing out there, they had two rooms, three rooms, and these were all wooden buildings. But they did have out there, they had a gym, swing sets, horseshoes and all that. But I'm glad you made this decision because it benefits the whole city. But this go way back. These was old wooden bars, as you know. They've been all bricked up. It's a beautiful sight now, because during that time, it was wide open. But you got a fence around it, and this is good that you're doing something now. On top of that, you need to put that fire station up there where that money was allocated for Reggie. You need to put it up there. Now, listen, let me very careful. All these homes that's up there in Trupston, now don't get mad because I say they're match box, because that's what they are. They're close together and they wouldn't. If that fire truck got to come from way down Effingham Street, the other one got to come from way out there on Victor Boulevard, and by the time you get there, if the good wind is going, all those homes going to be burned up. So now consider putting that fire station up there, and I know what happened to that money. Reggie won't say it, but I say, Mayor, where was the mayor? She built a seawall around the ridge down on County Street? Oh, yeah. But you see, you got to call a spade a spade. But anyway, thanks a lot. You did do something good. Now let's get it together, get the pool loading up. Don't drag your feet. Just go in there tomorrow, hand the man a check, and let's do some good.
Thank you, Sergeant Major.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members.
Good evening, Mr. Wright.
City Attorney, City Manager, Sergeant-at-Arms, Devil White and her capable staff. My name is Joseph Allright, 1451 Welcome Road in Cavalier Manor section of Portsmouth. I too applaud you, especially Vice Mayor, Chair, for bringing this to the council's attention. I did note that one item in here, you took $108,000 away from Cavalier Manor to help this project along, but I don't think we're going to mind it whatsoever. I too am one of the old timers. Back in the 40s, we used to have a swimming hole in that same area. A lot of kids got drowned during that time. I remember when that place was built, you know, just like it was bought before you, before it was the old Carver Homes area, and that was before some of you all were born, I know. But I do applaud it, and I think the next move is going to be, after you perfect this, is to come back to Cavalier Manor and restore those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Long overdue. It's my extra for noise.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Council members and other distinguished guests up at the podium. My name is Lawrence Davis. I live in 925 Florida Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia. I live in nine twenty-five Florida Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia, and I would like to say, well done, our faithful servants. It's a good job, I believe, what you're doing. I'm very much into trying to do what we can for our youth, because they are our future, and without them, there will not be tomorrow, and we must stand on solid ground in doing so. And it's been a very good meeting. I have an issue I'll speak to you a little later about, okay, when my time come, but it's a good job, what you're doing, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Honored to be a member of Portsmouth.
Sir, you got a few minutes left, and you won't be able to speak again now that you've come up here? So if I were you, I'd go ahead and get that in while that light is green.
All right, then let me get this off my agenda. My name is Lawrence Davis, as I said, okay? I represent the NAACP chapter here in Portsmouth, as well as the United Sports Academy of Hampton Roads and the Hampton Roads Prostate Cancer Health Forum. This coming week, which happens to be Father's Day, we are inviting you, Members of the Council, to come to, and I'll give each one of you on one of these, okay? We're giving a first annual Daughter Saving Our Daddies. Now, sometimes people say, who's your daddy? Well, we want to save them, all right? And this is for prostate cancer research, okay? This is the first one. We intend to make this as big as the PIT in Portsmouth is concerned. We have young ladies who have teams that'll be playing at Churchland High School on Saturday, I C Norcom on Sunday, the hours are from eight in the morning till six P.M. They will be from the grades of third grade to twelfth grade, okay? And we would invite the Mayor and City Council and others, and the general public also, to please come out and watch these young ladies and see what they can do. We in Portsmouth, we have been blessed to have some of the best athletes in the world, whether they're running track in the Olympics, or they're swimming, or if they're playing basketball or football, you know, we are good, we are real good in this state, and we want to make sure that that's known. And also, quality of life, I think Mrs. Randall was talking about. Well, little old guys like me, when you get past sixty-five, this prostate cancer thing just keeps knocking at your door. So I want to keep the quality of life going on for us also, because it's inevitable, it will happen, you know? But I want to thank you this evening for letting me speak and inviting you all out, and do you mind if I step forth and give each one if you want?
You can give it to Sergeant at Arms.
Okay, I sure will.
And he'll give it to you. Thank you, sir, and good night.
And a job well done.
Are there any other speakers?
Well, it might be.
Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry.
Really? Yes, my name is Contral Devon, I reside in the city of Portsmouth, Newport is my home. I am here tonight to say thank you. This has been a long process, walking on crutches, the whole nine, I would not quit. Thank you for using what we have and pleasing the city. Thank you Bishop, because there were many, or Councilman Admis, there were many days that I would just bombard you, because my heart was so overwhelmed, by finding somewhere for our children to go. Please, in your consideration for the workshop area, consider the teenagers, when you put an age limit on it, even if they have to have a consent from a parent, so they can get a feel of a trade, because that's what some of them need, they need a trade, and we can prepare them through our parks and recreations, and I am elated tonight. I didn't prepare to speak tonight, but I could not just sit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, everyone, thank you, Lady Elizabeth, I haven't said it in a long while, thank you, Lady Randall, Councilman Meeks, Mr. Moody, Vice Mayor, Mr. Rowe, City Attorney, thank you, everyone that fought for our youth. This was a job well done. I'm pleased to see the unity, and I want to say before I leave, Happy Father's Day to everyone. Ladies, please keep the bashing to zero, give the fathers respect, they all deserve it, and consider the ones who step up for the ladies and the families who don't have a father in place. Enjoy your holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Devon, and just, I'm glad you mentioned the shop area, and you know we have a very robust career and technical program in our schools, and I'm sure we will collaborate with our schools to do what's best for that area and for those young junior high kids as they lead up in the high school. Point well taken, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, first, I just want to thank Mr. Rowe and his staff and economic development, everyone, Nida, Mr. Thorne, for the swiftness in which you guys went about getting to this point, and to the entire council for embracing this project, this purchase. But I also wanted to give, recognize Colonel Leslie Harris, who's the gentleman who actually came to me and said, you know, that prop deal there is available, you all ought to see what you can do with it. And so, there he is right there.
Colonel Blake. Thank you, sir, well done.
That's what communication does for you, so thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we're done with all our speakers.
You have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero.
Okay, well done. How about an applause? How about that? Okay, continuing on with our items submitted by council, let me just say, this last week has been just refreshing, you know, the graduations are going on throughout this country at all levels, from our pre-K students all the way up to our college, and it's just a delight this time of year to see a lot of our young people moving on to the next level in their career and education, and it's been a delight. As you know, we had our three high school graduations last week, Norcom, Churchland, and Wilson, and by my count, and I do, I want to applaud all of our council members, we had quite a few members to attend the graduations this year. By my count from the graduation, there's about eight hundred and fifty-five total seniors that graduated. I counted about three hundred and eight of that eight hundred and fifty-five graduated with honors. A hundred and sixty-six of those eight hundred and fifty-five were first college students with our collaboration with TCC, and a grand total of nine point seven two million dollars in scholarships were awarded to these young people. So hats off to our school system and to these parents and to all of these kids for what they're doing. That's thirty-six percent of those kids graduating graduated with honors, and that's outstanding. We also had several other graduations, and I was very pleased to speak at Holy Light College of Bible, had a graduation last Sunday, and I was the commencement speaker, and that was a real treat, but my high honor was Friday, Murray View Hospital, and I think Elizabeth Simpson and the Virginia Pilot had a nice article on May the thirtieth that talked about Project Search, which is a collaboration with Virginia Commonwealth University and Bon Secours Murray View with CSEP and a whole lot of other partners to create or bring Project Search here to Hampton Roads and to here to Portsmouth, and I was the first speaker for that event, and I applauded Murray View for stepping out and wanting to be a part of this. This is an opportunity, this program, to allow some of our seniors with autism to forego their last year in high school and report to Murray View Medical Center and work with staff from CSEP and VCU and all over to be able to hone in on their skills to allow them to be ready for the workforce. And I did not anticipate what I saw, and the speech that I had, I had to throw it away and speak from my heart, because there were about six young people that graduated that just, you can see our tax dollars at work. We had people from the Commonwealth, from Richmond that come down to this, and it was probably about a hundred to two hundred people in attendance for these six high school seniors. Three of them were from I C Norcom, one young lady was from Tallwood, another in Virginia Beach, there was Kings Fork Suffolk, and I believe Norview. And this, again, was a pilot program that, it was just phenomenal to see the parents and the students, and I think if you go back and read the article that Elizabeth wrote, it talks about some of the studies and research and talk about a lot of our kids with autism, and it's normally after high school, two or three years before they actually go on to do any of those types of things, and so to have those kids ready and productive, and they actually went to Murray View every day, they had to get there on their own, that was part of it, they donned the brown scrubs, so they'll know that they're interns, and it was just, it was heartwarming. So I was really pleased to be a part of that, and very pleased with Joe Otis and his staff over at Murray View and the people at VCU and CSEP for bringing that together here. So my hats off to them, and we need more programs like that that work, because it is about our human capital, it is about our future, and all of us, special needs or not, have a place in this country and in this city. And again, it was just heartwarming. And finally, I think we had another successful weekend with our Seawall Festival and the fireworks on Saturday and Friday night, and I want to thank all of our event coordinators and parks and rec and our marketing folks, once again, I don't think I've ever seen that many people over on Portside Saturday night. It was, I think I started hearing complaints again about, why don't we move this thing over somewhere else, because it's too crowded over here, and I'm telling you, those are great complaints, but with that, are there any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk. Oh, and I have one more graduation, is it tomorrow, the Urban League, the UPS, the Operation Lift with the Urban League over at TCC, and I'm the guest speaker, so I think that's the last of our graduations. Congratulations again to all of our graduates. Madam Clerk.
Fourteen dash two twenty-five, report on pending items, and we have none this evening. Fourteen dash two twenty-six, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Betty Ashbury.
Good evening, my name is Betty Ashbury. I live in the Westmore Townhouses in the Churchland area. Wasn't sure that I wanted to get up and speak tonight, because I didn't get in touch with Wendy until about four thirty today to sign up, but, and since I have heard so many things tonight, actually, what I was gonna say has kind of changed a little bit. This announcement that you all just made, since I'm on Parks and Recreation Commission, is a wonderful thing that you're doing. I think it'll bring a lot of satisfaction to the people who work so diligently for so long to get some recreation. But the next thing I want to see is what you're going to do for the area codes oh three and oh seven, because I didn't see them on those lists. And Churchland really needs a pool, so, but anyway, understand that there is a board on the side of the Colony Theater that tells, you can go down there and put what your wishes are on there, I haven't seen it, but somebody told me there was one there. Have any of y'all seen it?
It's called Until I Die.
Is that what it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, well, that's good, so maybe I can get my little speech in here.
Had a lot of conversation about it, but yes, ma'am.
You know, we are doing a good, a lot of good things in here, and I was really interested and didn't come as frequently as I should have, when you all were in discussion over all of the school situation. And I agree that the schools are a big part of what brings the people to Portsmouth, but that's not the only thing that brings people to Portsmouth. Recreation is another one, and safety is another one. And I think that probably, we have got three of the finest safety groups represented in our city with our police, our fire, and our sheriff's department, anywhere in the Tidewater area. We don't have something popping up in the paper every day now.
Shh.
But the one thing that really I want to see, and would go on my wish board down there, is a police headquarters. I go down Jefferson Avenue in Newport News, and there is a very impressive building sitting right there that says Police Headquarters. And I think it is such a disservice to our police department to have them scattered all over the city of Portsmouth. I think we should be able to go to one building and find any unit that we want. Hopefully, we don't have to go to find any of them, but if we needed them, we could at least find them all in one building. And I think out of those three departments, we have got three of the finest leaders that we could possibly find in the Tidewater area. So I think we owe it to our police department to get, and I know it's been discussed, the old courthouse building, but that seems to be moving awfully slow.
Yes, it is.
So, but I think we need to do something about that. The other thing, it's not going to be any problem with us keeping our stomachs full in the city of Portsmouth, from the reports I've heard tonight, but Marlene, you always saying, we're not old?
That's right.
Okay. For the mature women in this city.
Seasoned.
I would, seasoned, that's a good word, too, David.
Love it.
That I would like to see our economic development go after, and I've been doing and saying this for a long, long time, some department store, that we ladies, mature ladies, could go and buy an outfit without going to Norfolk, to MacArthur Mall, or to Chesapeake, well, I don't go to Chesapeake Mall anymore, but any of the malls in the Tidewater area to buy something to wear. So that would be on my list, that we go on the side of the Colony Theater. But these are things I wish you would think about, because I think they're things that really need to have in the city of Portsmouth, and I do believe, as I said, not only are our schools a big drawing card for the city, but recreation and safety also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ashbury, and before you take your seat, you brought up several points that we are working on, and you're right, the Churchland area is in need, and if you remember, back three years ago, when I got in this office, I identified those areas and tried to push to get something in both quadrants of this city, because they're needed, and so I'm with you there. The Public Safety Complex, we definitely need one. It is unusual to come to a small city like this and see our folks dispersed throughout these neighborhoods, and I mean, all these different buildings and things, that there is an opportunity for us to get our heads together and do that. The court, and the old courthouse and the jail is an issue. We do need to get off the dime and make a decision, because that could hinge a whole lot of other things that we're doing. So I appreciate you bringing up those comments, and that wall over there has brought up right much conversation, because there's quite a few people, you might want to go over and write that up there, and make sure you sign it.
Oh, I don't mind, I don't mind putting my name.
Let them know that Betty Ashbury was here.
No, I don't have a problem with signing my name to anything that I ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cherry, I think he might want you.
Thank you. Ms. Ashbury, in addition to what the mayor said, in the new parking rec plan, there will be a pool going in at the old Churchland Library, and that's gonna be covered, correct, Nida? I don't know the exact timeframe, but that is on the plan, so you have a pool in Churchland in the future.
In the old Churchland Library?
Old Churchland Library, we're gonna come.
It's not a very big building.
We're gonna make, it's gonna be a little bigger when we're done with it.
Is this gonna look better?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Before you die, make sure you get the Vice Mayor to write that on that wall, too, right? Yes, ma'am.
I don't think I'm gonna wait too long to get down there.
Do we have time for anyone else?
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbound Farms neighborhood of Portsmouth. Principles of Liberty Ten, the God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people. The founding fathers believed the divine right of the people to govern themselves and exercise exclusive power of sovereignty in their official affairs was expressed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in its proclamation of January the twenty-third, seventeen seventy-six. It is a saying that in every government, there must exist somewhere a supreme, sovereign, absolute, and uncontrollable power, but this power resided But this power resided always in the body of the people, and it never was or can be delegated to one man or a few. The great Creator has never given man a right to give others authority over them, unlimited either in duration or degree. James Madison said, "The ultimate authority, wherever the source may be found, resides in the people alone." But even if it is acknowledged that the people are divinely endowed with the sovereign power to govern, what happens if elected or appointed officials take the authority of the people to impose a dictatorship or some form of abusive government on them? It is the people's right and duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. The reason why men enter into society is the preservation of their property. Whenever the legislators endeavor to take away and destroy the property of the people or to reduce them to slavery under arbitrary power, the officials of government put themselves into a state of war with the people. They are thereupon absolved from any further obedience and are left to the common refuge which God hath provided for all men against force and violence. Therefore, the legislative has overstepped this fundamental rule of society, and either by ambition, fear, folly, or corruption endeavor to grasp for themselves or put into the hand of another an absolute power over the lives, liberty, and estate of the people. By this breach of trust, the government officials forfeit the power the people have put into their hands, and it passes to the people who have the right to resume their original liberty and provide their own safety and security. In our Constitution of Virginia, a declaration of rights made by the good people of Virginia in the exercise of their sovereign powers, which rights do pertain to them and their prosperity as the basis and foundation of government, that all men are by nature equally free and independent, and have certain inherent rights of which, when they enter into a state of society, they cannot by any compact deprive or disvest their posterity, namely, the enjoyment of life and liberty with the means of acquiring and possessing property and pursuing and obtaining happiness and safety. That all power is vested in and, and consequently derived from the people, that magistrates are their trustees and servants, and at all times amenable to them. In Portsmouth Vision Statement, Portsmouth will continue to be a diverse city of people who are proud of their neighborhoods and their city. They will have a strong sense of place and of belonging to their community. Portsmouth will be a place where all citizens feel like they belong and where they, where they'll be proud to belong. Is Portsmouth a place where all citizens feel like they belong and where they are, they are proud to belong, really? On May 27, 14, there was a presentation concerning the proposed building of single-family homes on the old Port Norfolk Elementary School site. The citizens in the neighborhood are concerned about flooding, size of lots, and potential environment problems under the land. The citizens have concerns about this site. It has been a longstanding fight where the city wants to ignore the sovereign authority of the people in this neighborhood. At a public hearing on June the 23rd, 2010, the council stated they were going to vote to further study the developer's proposal. It's not a done deal, it's just a letter of intent. Vice Mayor Bill Moody Jr. said, "The developer will involve neighbors in the design of the homes and the use of green space as the project advances," Arnett said. When the idea of developing the Port Norfolk land came into the developer's consciousness, he needed to contact the civic leagues with his proposal to develop their land. The civic leagues are the self-governing unit of the city. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Si.
Yeah.
Uh, the, you know, that particular project was vetted and went through the public hearing process like other projects in our city. And in fact, the developer met with citizens of Port Norfolk and surrounding communities at, at the church there at least one time, may have been a couple of times. I know I attended one of the meetings, plus it went through the planning commission, it went through two readings of council, and in fact, the last report I got, the homes out there are selling pretty darn good, and I know not, like most projects, not everyone supported it, but I think, I think that development has, has turned out rather well, and certainly hasn't impacted the, the environment. It's brought some new citizens into Portsmouth. I think the homes are selling, I don't know, in the neighborhood, $230, $40, $50,000. So, the market rate homes. So it, it did receive a hearing, so.
I'm just saying, trying to research, and it's very secretive about the information, so I'm not able to get all the research I need.
Google it, I just, I just Googled it myself, so you might try the internet, it still has it.
I have.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. Thank you, Ms. Si. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mark Adalde Kiotraski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council. In my final address to you this evening, also my first address to you this evening, I know you missed me during the impromptu, but I felt that the people closest to this particular issue were the ones who should address it. I want to revisit our conversation of two weeks ago relative to the vehicle registration fee increase that you all adopted as part of the budget. I have, since that meeting, gone back and looked at the council video, and to my eyes and ears, the discussion was not very concrete about a rollback on that fee in the next budget season. Unlike the commitment that council made several years ago to the members of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, where council passed a resolution directing the city manager to ensure that appropriate steps were taken to undo the social security offset, you all didn't do anything of that sort. And so I say again that absent anything that we can take to the bank, I'll believe the rollback of that fee increase when I see it. And my inclination is to take some action myself by voting for people this election cycle who are committed to rolling it back, not the people who put it in place. I want to also address a little more lengthily, I was brief, as I said, and usually a person who says I'm going to be brief is a liar. In responding to the city attorney's statement about fees and taxes, I belong to a group that went to the State Supreme Court on that very issue. We couldn't convince a majority of the judges that a fee is a tax, but I still believe it, and I'm not bound, in terms of my own understanding of what's what, by the opinions of the judiciary. Judges come and judges go, and a later court may decide that they, in fact, didn't have it right. We've seen that at the federal level. So I'm hopeful that good sense will prevail in the state someday during my lifetime, before I die, as, as the previous speaker said. So if you are imposing a fee on the citizenry, you can call it a fee, you can call it a tax, it's still dipping money out of their wallets and pocketbooks. And I also believe, state code notwithstanding, that a fee should bear some relationship to the area in which it is assessed. If you're increasing the vehicle registration fee, then what you are spending the money for should have a direct relationship to owning a vehicle and operating a vehicle on the streets of this municipality. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir, very much. And before you take your seat, one of the young men that graduated from the Project Search, was he from your neighborhood, I understand?
Yes, sir.
And he was quite a character. The folks at Murray View applauded his work and his tenacity, and I think Joe Otis made a comment about, he didn't know about the transportation, and they had to get to and from home, and I know this is not on your subject, but he had to catch the bus to get back out to your neighborhood, and they were very pleased with that young man. He's got a lot of talent.
He's done a lot of community service activities. He is, has been an auxiliary sheriff's deputy.
Okay.
He was performing some neighborhood watch-type activities with official backing from the sheriff's department, so he really is very community-spirited.
Thank you. Good night.
Our final speaker is Mr. John Chappell.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm going to be the most depressing person here tonight. Mr. Mayor, do you have any idea how many renters vote for you? Do you?
A lot of them, sir.
Uh-huh. I'm a renter by choice. My name is John Chappell, I live in Bayview Gardens. I have a letter in my portfolio says that I haven't been late for any indebtedness for almost 30 years. I also have a letter saying that I'm not responsible for anywhere in terror. I've been there since 12:09, when the Northeastern ruined my house on Webster. I had an English furnace. I have an ordeal where if I don't pay, I'm going to be a victim. I'm 74 years old, and in six days, I'll be on the street. I have a compliance issue. My place has never been inspected. I want somebody in the city to come and look. Can I get somebody to come and look at my house?
What was your address again, sir?
14 Shebago Apartment K. Now, I took this place because of the proximity to shopping. The police reports were some of the best in the city. The grounds were clean. I had a choice of three places. I've been here since 3:30. I didn't know I had to sign up, I should have been coming regular. That's what my ceiling looked like. I have a letter saying that Bayview would select a vendor to clean, but it's come back through in less than two years. Have you guys ever had a ceiling fall? My neighbor's ceiling fell downstairs, I thought she was dead. I went to court on the 5th. I don't qualify for a good faith defense. I showed the judge where my landlord is responsible for compliance. He wouldn't look. He asked me to bring things to, to the desk. I did. He gave a judgment and didn't make a comment. What I'm saying to you guys, all renters aren't dirty. Some of us have pride, most of us keep our places clean. You cannot tell a person that don't bathe by the way he looks, okay? I want somebody to take a step and come out and look. I'm going to survive regardless, but that's not the issue. The issue is that tenants is a bad word. Most of us are familiar with the voucher system, Section 8. The lease needs to be redone. I'm going to be calling state senators. I'm going to get in contact with persons that I knew in Roanoke, Shipwood Room. I've been doing this since 1968. Nobody knows me, I've done it in Parkview, Mount Hermann, Webster. Nobody will come out. Everybody talks a good game. I want somebody to take a look, and I'll take it from there. I can't get Channel 10 because I owe the landlord, and I'm not going to give them any more money. I qualify for escrow if any of you guys do. Won't listen. Tenors have to pay or else. We don't have any protection under the lease. I have my summonses here. Would you believe that the city of Portsmouth allow landlords, and allow landlords to take a case to court? The lease says 21 days after the five-day late period, they go on the 10th or the 11th. I'm entitled to 10 more days, I can't get anybody to listen. I've been to the city attorney, Commonwealth attorney, and the courts.
Mr. Chappell, thank you. Mr. Rowe?
Yes, sir. As soon as he sits down, Fred Brusso is going to go meet with him. Mr. Brusso, we'll get all your contact information, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay. I still want, excuse me, this is around the house, coach.
Just fine, sir.
I, I, I'm still the guy that did the green over next door.
That's right.
All the time. Chappell paints every church on Effingham Street.
Yes, he did.
Uh-huh. We still do. Guys, look out.
Thank you, sir.
Because there are people that need you.
Thank you very much.
There's no additional business to come before the count.
There's no additional business. I do, however, see the new, is that the new president of the Prentice Park-Brighton Civic League? Would you please stand? I see you standing with the mask there. Would you introduce him? Mr. Allen, would you introduce the new president?
Uh, yes, I'll introduce him.
Real briefly.
Members of council, this is Jesse Leek. He is the new president of the Brighton-Prentice Park Civic League, which is one of the better civic leagues in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Thank you for coming, and we look forward to seeing you and working with you. This is your first night, and you get good news with a recreation facility, right? Thank you.
John wants to speak.
Mr. Manin?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a very interesting dilemma. Tim Everly has asked me for the exact location of our new centrally-located recreation site. Because of its central and strategic location, it's adjacent to several neighborhoods, Truxton, Brighton, Prentice Park, it conserves Craddock and Highland Bitmore. It would be good for maybe you all to say it is, do you agree that this location is so central that it's adjacent to and in both Truxton and Brighton?
Absolutely.
Yes.
And the, and this, probably we should name it the South Side Recreational Complex. We're adjourned.
Yes.